To order, will the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion in proper second for the agenda. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adopt or approve the request by American Pattern and Storage for interest in former food bank building for a future project.
Okay, I'll second that. Seeing as we have a motion in proper second, is there any discussion on that item?
Noel, just how much is the cost of the dumpster to the city?
I've been speaking with Mark Rice about that. I don't have that cost estimate yet. Mark's working on what he thinks that would be, just us having a dumpster there placed and emptied periodically.
Okay, okay.
I think the only thing that would probably be a cost to us would be the actual landfill fees for the dumpster.
And the, in looking over the, that development or the agreement, and your explanation talks about that they are going to demolish, or they can, over the course of this time, demolish the interior, tear it apart, tear it down, and then it says in your statement that they can then rent it out?
They would like the first right to rent it out if we decide to. Essentially, let me go backwards a little bit. So the city bought the old food bank building when the new food bank was built, and that was part of that whole development agreement to create the Human Services Campus. The city hasn't really decided what the plans are with the former food bank building. You know, it's right there at 11th. Our Rath neighborhood plans and our comprehensive future land use map show that site as being an industrial site. We've kind of divided 11th down to 18th along there. It's kind of the industrial employment zone, I think it's called. On the other side of 11th, as you come back towards 6th, it shows riverfront housing. So we were kind of looking at, hey, is that a housing site? Is it an industrial site? The plans show this. It's a large site. Of course, there's some other private property with a small bar building and an auto repair building out in front that would need to be into the full plans for redevelopment of that site. So when American Pattern and Storage first contacted us, they wanted to know if we wanted to sell it. We said we weren't, we hadn't really made that decision yet. They came back with what I think is a very good proposal, is that they would rent it for three years. They would do some interior demolitions on, the one larger space is all kind of cut up with a bunch of small walls and small office spaces and all that. So they basically clear that out, making it a more usable space. I think that gives us a good three years to see how the development goes for them as well as for the city. It may very well be that, you know, at the end of this, they end up buying the site or something from the city and bringing a lot more employment, a lot more tax base in there through maybe some selective demolitions and some more additional expansions. So we think this is kind of a good working lease so that we can see how well it works for American Pattern and Storage, which is a growing company in the Waterloo community, and see how it works for the city of Waterloo as well.
And Noel, how does the amount come up with, the monthly amount?
The $600 a month. That was proposed by them because of the fact that they would be doing a lot of the labor for the demolition, the interior demolition and all that. We thought it was a fair amount. We estimated that interior demolition, I think, at about $45,000 over that two to three year period that it would cost us.
Okay. So this isn't a fair market rent, right? But it's...
I think it is in combination with the work that they're going to do.
Right, but it's in combination with that?
Correct.
Okay.
And Noel, if they're, if they did do the demolition and that area was cleared, the rent proceeds, if it would be rented, would go to the city, not American?
Correct. The rent that they'd be paying now just goes into the property management fund.
Okay, so they couldn't sublet that space or anything like that?
I don't remember how the lease agreement reads. Mike's here from American Pattern and Storage. I don't think the lease allows him to.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And they're not paying property taxes in this either, right?
They would be responsible for any property taxes levied against the property.
Any further discussions, Mr. Morrissey?
No. Chairman Jones.
Excellent. Okay. So those in favor of the request by American Pattern and Storage for interest in the former food bank building for future project, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. That item passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a request by Jim Chiswick to rent approximately 196 square feet or 14 by 14 foot square feet of storage space for $140 per month with utilities included, located at 1112 Sycamore, formerly Black Hawk Sprinkler Building.
And I will second that. So we have a motion in proper second. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Morrissey.
I do not.
Seeing none and hearing none. Those in favor of the request by Mr. Jim Chiswick to rent approximately 196 square feet of storage space, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. That item passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Here tonight is to do just that. As soon as I get this mouse to work.
Yeah, Craig, be careful over there. Handrails.
Craig's having problems. I'm having problems. This... Yeah. I've got the mouse hooked up because I didn't. And I'll have it here in just a second. We'll be in good shape. That's all right. Come on, the computer. Everything is going to... Come on, mouse. I know. There it is. It's coming back up. It don't like my fingers. I'm going to go always top. Hit that. There we go. Now let's get right here. Click on that. Yep. There you go. That's it. That's all we need. Then we go up. Slideshow. Start the slideshow from the beginning. And there it is. Yep. Again, we're here tonight to talk about the fat oils and greases ordinance, which is the FOG program. If you remember, back May 3rd of last year, we had a presentation to the council. I don't remember who all was here, but I think most of you were here for that. The discussion topics are the federal requirements, introduction of FOG, regulating food service establishments, key elements of the FOG program, local ordinance, grease interceptor sizing requirements, conducting inspections and equipment. The federal regulations provide legal authority for POTWs for regulating any pollutant that causes interference at the POTW. The 40 CFR, which is the Code of Federal Regulations, regulates solids or viscous pollutants in the amounts which will cause obstruction of POTW and its collection system.
What's the POTW?
Public Gaung Treatment Works.
Thanks.
That's basically talking about the treatment plant itself and the collection system. And of course, it's up to municipalities to develop and enforce specific regulation, local limits. Like I say, a lot of this was in the first presentation. I don't know if you want to go through all that again or just kind of skip through it. You've seen what FOG is.
Well, in the interest of full education though, Larry, I mean, this is another ordinance that's going to eventually be asked to be passed. I don't want to get to the endpoint and have folks that are not, didn't get the information.
This was the first PowerPoint presentation we put on. It was based on DuBois and its ordinance and regulations on FOG. They have a good program. I think they established it in 2006. FOG is a liquid or solid material composed primarily of fat, oil, grease that originates from animal or vegetable sources. Byproducts, food processing and preparation is 30, 40 percent of what we eat is FOG. I think Ms. Cole found that interesting last time we said that. FOG enters sewer systems via cleaning, clean-up activities. FOG and solid food particles accumulate in sewer pipe. Similar arteries equally eventually cause blockages and overflows. Why don't we have any grease? We're just a coffee shop. Well, this tells you basically like if you, and Starbucks is up here. So if you go to Starbucks and get one of their special coffees and they're putting milk, whole milk, or even ice cream in it, that is percentages of milligrams per liter of FOG that's in the system or in what you're eating. We don't have any fries. We're just a deli, okay? You still have meat products, etc., that produce oils and greases. FOG has caused nearly 50 percent of all sanitary sewer overflows. And the term you're hearing a lot from us is SSOs, which is sanitary sewer overflows. SSO can cause raw sewage to back up into homes, businesses, and flow to nearby streams and lakes, create the need for increased sewer maintenance, and why regulate FOG, transfer the maintenance cost to the point of origin, which is, in most cases, restaurants, nursing homes, that type thing that's generating this. We ensure proper disposal of FOG and waste. Regulating food establishments, or FSEs as they're known now, push and fall under municipal FOG ordinance. Any facilities with discharges or has the potential to discharge FOG directly to the POTW. We have a list here, and I think most of you realize what these businesses are and without even an explanation on it, you can understand why they do it. FOG outreach. One of the key programs or key elements of the FOG program is the outreach program. We'll be developing a FOG program that will be part of our CMON manual, which is the Capacity Management Operation Manual. In it, these elements will be in there, like speaking engagements. We want to engage the people who are required to have interceptors and grease traps, elderly community centers, schools, kitchen staff, culinary schools. Those are the type people who really need to understand what's going on. Educational mailings would be...
Sorry, do you want to take questions at the end or in between, or how do you want to work on?
You just tell me because I'm ready.
So on the previous slide, can you go back one?
Absolutely.
So of these types of establishments, what, do they have, is this new to them? Do they have the capacity to do this today, or is there a large cost associated with becoming compliant?
Most restaurants will have a grease trap. Now, the new rules coming out will be interceptors, which are large outside units. If you're building a restaurant today, you won't have one of the small grease traps. You'll have an outside interceptor, and they start at 1,000 gallons. Ice cream shops, it'll probably be fairly new to them. Delis will be new to them. Office cafeteria is new. Assisted living, yes. Convenience stores, most of your convenience stores around town who cook or anything else have small grease traps down. Coffee shops, it'll probably be new to them. Churches. Some of your larger grocery stores like Hy-Vee have grease traps or the large grease traps. Bars who serve food, that's kind of a iffy, iffy. They might, they might not, depending on what they're serving. Concession stand, that's a good one we're going to have to address because you have, you have a person with a trailer have certain requirements where a person setting up with a tent doesn't have to meet those requirements. A person with a concession trailer has to have about the same thing as a restaurant dress, but they don't have a grease trap. Now wherever they dump or dispose of their gray water, they're going to have to dispose it such a fashion that it will end up going through a grease trap.
So do we have these at Young Arena, Sportsplex, anywhere where there's a kitchen?
Yes.
Yeah. And so once you trap it in this grease trap, then where does it go?
Well, that will, we're going to get into that as we go. That'll be one of the processes of cleaning the grease trap, scheduling the cleaning, inspecting the traps and everything. So we'll, as we progress along, eventually we'll end up at the treatment plant.
Do you, so do you have any idea of some of the costs associated with compliance for some of these businesses?
Sure. It could be from zero to, how much, Jim? 40?
I paid that much for them when you have to tear up the pavement outside.
So, I mean, it can be very expensive. It could be relatively inexpensive.
Okay.
Okay. Again, this is a list of some of the things we'll be doing. We'll be doing educational mailing to probably not so much residential, but business. And I'm not sure that we could do it with the sewer bills because of the amount of space we're allowed on them. But primarily, it will be done through just mailing. This pops up. Recommended best management practices is limit or discontinue the use of garbage disposals. That may be Craig can tell you more about than I can. I know that that's one of the things that you don't want to do and put it into the sewer system. You definitely don't want to put it into your grease traps. Scrape food debris into garbage. Do not pour oils, greases down the drain. That's pretty no-brainer. Use mesh screens and sinks and floor drains. We have a lot of problem at ConAgra with mesh screens not being, being into the floor drains. I think they've rectified that now. Dry wipe, greasy cookware, paper towels, and naturally train employees. We have to have the authority to conduct inspection. Owner operator of an FSE shall accommodate routine and non-routine compliance inspections of grease removal devices. Form all FSEs ordinance of FOG inspections by mailing. Have a copy of ordinance during initial inspection. We're getting in now, we're getting now in more...
Talk into the microphone.
I need that around my neck, I think.
Larry?
Yes.
How many, how many businesses will have to be inspected? And will you need additional employees to do that?
We're estimating around 800 right now. And yes, we will need additional employees.
Is that 800 a year? Do you have to do it annually?
They suggest you do it annually. We're looking at doing a long-range program. Naturally, we want to go after the worst offenders first and try to bring them into compliance and then work our way down.
Okay, thank you.
So some places may be inspected as often as a month, once a month for a while to see that they're staying in compliance. Okay?
Okay.
What we're getting in now is more, what you were asking here is about annual inspection, scheduled inspections, and that type stuff. This is getting in more of the program and away from the ordinance and the need for the ordinance. But this is what we'll actually be doing. We'll be making scheduled visits with the owners and operators. We'll be putting out a lot of information, educational information and handouts explaining best management practices. One of the things that we want to do is get a proper cleaning schedule for everyone, which means you may have to clean your grease trap or your interceptor once a month, or another place might not have to clean theirs, but maybe once every three or four months. It's depending on your operation and the size of your trap. We're going to develop a list because we want to control the number of people that are doing the cleaning and hauling because they're going to be, they're going to be filling out forms that basically guarantee us that they are following proper procedures on doing this. We'll be tracking all this naturally through a computer program and ensure that everyone's following the regulations. We will, I'm not going to say we're going to have annual inspections. We should have at least one inspection a year. It's going to be difficult for starting out the program, but as the program goes, we'll probably go to an annual inspection on each FSE. There'll be a scheduled inspection. We'll check the grease trap interceptor and ask for their records, and the records are their cleaning records. Compliance follow-up inspections. If we have people that we feel are not complying, except when we're there to do an inspection because we're calling them ahead of time, we will do a unannounced inspection. And again, we'll check for their grease trap interceptor cleanliness, and we'll ask for their records. This gives you an idea of the 25 percent rule, or every three months, they say whichever comes first, that you should check your grease trap or your interceptor. And it basically gives you a little idea of what you're looking for in a grease trap or an interceptor when you sample it. And when you sample it, you basically take, on the inside grease trap, you just take a tube, run down it, put your thumb over it's what they're doing, pull it up, and look for the stratification. When you're outside interceptor, we have what, it's a long plastic tube. It's got a foot valve in it, so you don't put your thumb over the top of it. It's a little bigger. You stick it down in, bring it up, the foot valve drops down. Then you'll be able to see the stratification that you have here on this screen. You can work through this formula if you want to. I don't want to. The grease hauler training, we intend on having a program where the grease hauler will actually kind of be certified by our department so that we can ensure that they are following each one of these steps. We don't want to get into a situation where we have a hauler who is going out there and not cleaning the trap properly. That's the idea of the whole program, to ensure it's being cleaned properly. We read through this, measure the FOG solids, pump off floating grease layer, put the pump hose into the bottom and remove the solids layer. You go back up, you can see the bottom solids. You can see the grease at the top. Remove the remaining gray water, scrape down the sides of a trap or interceptor, pump out scrapings. Ensure inlet and outlet tees are present and not clogged. These are very important, two very important parts of the grease trap. Ensure baffles is, should be as present. It says as present, should be our present functioning. Inspect trap for, interceptor for cracks, etc. Ensure lids are in place and properly skewed. Provide copy of invoice management FSE. Properly dispose of the waste at the WWTF. That's wastewater treatment plant. Data management software. We are not actually using ACT for data management software. We haven't chosen the software. This is an example of what the software does. It provides ability to maintain contact information, inspection dates, types of conditions of grease removal debris device. Ability to generate store reports, NOVs, notice of violations. If you're in violation, we will give you an NOV, inspection forms, calendar for scheduling inspections. There's a lot of other software that's similar. This is just typically what the software would look like when you bring it up, and you would get a page like this for each FSE. This is a list of FSEs. Again, you're looking at not here. What we'll be able to do is generate an FSE density map like you have here that shows us where the densest food service establishments are. I mean, Crossroads area will probably be the densest as it goes out, Kimball Ridge and around like that. So we'll be able to generate a map which will allow us to know where they're at, where the most dense population of them are at. Progress reports versus non-compliant FSEs. We're going to have to know the types of grease removal devices. DuBois itself, this is what they have when you asked me about how many restaurants. Des Moines itself, this, this is what they have when you asked me about how many restaurants or FSEs, I gotta stop saying restaurants, have grease traps. As you can see, twenty-five percent of them there has no device at all. Twenty-five percent have interceptors and fifty percent have the grease traps. We will probably find numbers very similar to this. I can't guarantee that, but I, I'm thinking that this is what we're going to be looking at. We'll be tracking the inspection completions. One, well, it says here, we'll ignore that, one inspector, twenty-five inspections a month. This is more just charts, graphs showing you what they've done in inspections. This one is an interesting one. Is, is the number of fog inspections they've done. As you see, they started this in October of eleven and in August of twenty-twelve, they had their largest number of grease inspections with less follow-ups. That's the key to it. If you look back at December eleventh, they had very few inspections, more follow-ups. People were coming into compliance. It's basically what that's showing you. The means of funding the fog program, we have discussed this. And they charge fifty dollars for a routine scheduled inspection. I believe we're proposing the same thing. No fee for compliance on scheduled inspections. That's, that'll be a surprise inspection. If we feel you're not in compliance, we will show up unannounced and we won't charge you for it. Fines. We have a fine schedule. Our ordinance that, that follows fairly close to this. Licensing and permits will be something that will have to be worked out with building department. Whether we charge an annual fee or not is another thing that we haven't really decided on yet. I mean, we, we've got some things in there, but we don't have everything. And this is an example of two hundred dollars a year for grease traps or, or no device, fifty dollars a year for properly sized interceptors. What we're trying to do is reduce the sewer line maintenance in, in the areas where the high number of FFE, FSEs are at who are non-compliant or on the edge of being non-compliant.
Larry?
Yes?
So, on the, on the fines, first offense, second offense, third offense. So you go in, ordinance passes, someone has a first offense. How long do they have to remedy the offense? Or do they have to, or can they just, I mean, it looks like it might be cheaper just to pay an annual two hundred dollar fine than-
I, and I'd, I'd like to answer that in, in the actual PowerPoint on the ordinance itself.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Right. Sure enough. It, I, I would like to keep that going and go through there if that's all right.
Yeah.
The local ordinance, you want to develop and build a consensus with stakeholders. We have had some input. We have not done a lot of outreach and meetings. We have basically been put under the gun to get this done. I mean, we, you see, the first presentation was May third of twenty thirteen. And now we're under pressure to have this ordinance in place by the end of this month, or even the next month, I'm sorry. A lot of this outreach and this type stuff, we will be doing that as we develop the program itself, the inspection program. Unfortunately. We've had building officials involved. We've had the plumbing inspectors involved, permit department. Of course, we've naturally worked with codes. Sizes interceptors and methods. Again, there, there is a formula that we'll come to that will show you how to size a grease trap or interceptor. And there's no replacement of traps. They will be interceptors, which means they're outside of the building. They are a lot larger in most cases. This, this is the one down at the bottom that people ask a lot about. Are they allowed to keep their current grease trap device or grease removal device of any? As long as they maintain compliance, we put a provision in there for that. You can't cause interruptions and basically that's by not cleaning or improper sized grease trap to the POTW.
Larry?
Yes?
Can you back that up just one more?
I sure can.
So you're, under that grease trap's no longer allowed, you've got except under physical or economic constraints?
Yes.
Who, who defines that or how's that determined?
The way it is written now, and again, I'd like to get into this as we go through the PowerPoint for the ordinance. Basically, that falls on the shoulders of the superintendent of department. Okay. Properly sized exterior grease interceptors is required if, and again, this is based on Des Moines stuff. They started in two thousand and six, constructed after the ordinance. Building is renovated to include an FSE where one didn't previously exist. A lot of this, we're going to be doing the same thing. You could change that to the winter of two thousand and fifteen. Renovation requires building permits of greater than fifty thousand dollars to have you install an interceptor. Or if you, in, during that, you would have to basically change your plumbing fixtures and grease, and then the grease, and alter the grease trap. FSEs necessitate extra sewer line maintenance. That's the reason for it. FSEs exceed discharge limits. Ours is one hundred milligrams per liter a day. Des Moines is four hundred. We have a tighter range on our accepted discharge. You've got to install an exterior grease interceptor unless exceptional physical, physical constraint. Building lies on property line, FSEs in small food courts, that type of stuff. Or it permits, it creates an economic hardship. You must submit a profit-loss statement to the city. Not a, it's not a free pass. You must install some form of grease removal device. Basically what that is saying, that they're allowing them not to install an outside interceptor but because of the economic hardship basically put in, in an interior grease trap. Dishwashers and garbage disposals are not approved for use with interior grease traps and must not discharge directly the POTW. In this case, they're wanting you to put them into the interceptor outside and not into your grease trap inside. There's a reason for that. We'll get to that. Limitations of grease traps, as you can see there on the left bottom, that's a fairly small grease trap. They service only one or two drainage fixtures, not designed for dishwashers and disposals. Short time, short retention time, hot water can't cool, emulsives carries fog out of the trap. Pretty basic. They have a short lifespan and they rust is a common problem with them, which the baffle plates, the tees will rust off and you just have a pass-through. And they require frequent, frequent, I'm drying up, frequent maintenance, either weekly or monthly. Grease interceptor sizing, external grease interceptors, a- a- as I said before, there's a one thousand gallon minimum and then they go up five thousand gallon maximum or two in tandem at ten thousand gallon. That's, that's a large, large interceptor. Sizing factors, seating, hours of operation, dishwashers, garbage disposal and washable service area. This is how you would size it, which I don't, again, if you want to go through the math, we can go through it, but it just tells you.
No.
Let's get off of it before somebody says yes. This is an example of a grease interceptor. It'd be two thousand gallon, as you see, or it could be a ten thousand, but I'm saying it's two thousand gallon, a thousand gallon on each side. That's what they basically look like. When we conduct inspections, we're going to be doing this. We're going to document personnel you meet. We're going to date and time of inspection, type of inspections, an initial annual compliance follow-up. Type of FSE. Is it a full-service restaurant, fast food, bar, or is it a church or whatever? Hours of operation, the seating capacity. Type and number of grease removal devices. Again, they could have one grease interceptor, they might have two, so. And you'll have to list the drainage fixtures that are tied to it, plus the record of the fog solids total depth. Document all drainage fixtures and equipment. This is cute. Watch this. This is a grease trap. Wasn't that neat? If you actually fill the gre- fill the grease trap up, it was empty. As you see, the fog came to the top on the left-hand side. The tube allows water to flow through. You do have some solids deposition in the effluent side. Plus, you will have some grease at the top. That grease at the top has to be less than one hundred parts per million. One of the challenges we're going to have is the language barrier. Explaining, we've been in some of the restaurants and talked to some of the people and it's hard to explain to them what they need and what they have to have, but we'll work through that. Additional plumbing may be needed. This is just, on the left, you'll see a grease trap where they plumbed around it. This is just some more pictures of inspections that were done. This is interesting here, one here. You'll see at the top, you'll see that's a grease trap and you'll see there's one baffle. And if you look at this, there should be three baffles in there. And the, two of them probably rotted out because that's something that's normal with these grease traps. So they simply took PVC and bypassed grease trap altogether. You don't have to clean it that way. Of course, it don't work. This is some more examples of, this is the clear plastic tube here on the top that you would use on the interior grease trap. They say with a stopper, thumb works as well. Over on the bottom is the, we use a unit called a sludge judge. This would be into an interceptor, it would be deep. Here it's hauled to their headworks, as they call it, for loads in organic solid trash, et cetera. It goes through digesters. This is, you don't want to see that, that's a, this, this is an interesting piece that we picked up from there. This is a graph that they put together. And if you'll look, they started in two thousand and six and that's your bottom line down there. And if you go from there, they were basically getting about a hundred fifty thousand gallons a year of grease from FSEs. When they put their grease trap in program, and this was, again, it stops in March because that's when we picked up their information. You can see that in, say, October, they were taking in six hundred and fifty thousand gallons that month. So about, you know, six, six and a half times as much as they would take in, or five to six and a half times as much. I found that interesting and we will probably see somewhere along those results, we'll be not getting six hundred thousand gallons a month. But we will be getting more than we're getting. That was the end of the original one. This is the ordinance. I don't have the entire ordinance on here because of the amount of space it was taken up. And our purpose in the ordinance is prevention of sanitary sewer blockage and obstructions due to oils, fats, oils and greases, fog. Fog discharge, commercial kitchens, restaurants, food processing, processing facilities, any established where fog vegetable or animal or origin enter POTW directly or indirectly. Fog contributes to blockages and spills and violations of Title forty, code of federal regulations, as we looked at in that first PowerPoint. The effective date of the fog regulation, we're proposing it to be January one, twenty fifteen. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is we need to write a program around the ordinance and adopt that program. And when I say the program, this is our inspection program, how we do it, how we're going to document it, the programs we're going to use to document it, the number of inspections we expect to do in a year, those type things. We also will have to have a training program for the haulers. We will have to develop a, a program where we basically certify them to haul to our plant. If they are not certified, we will not allow them to haul to our plant. We will basically issue them a license. If they don't haul to our plant, I'm not sure where they're going to haul to, but those type things will be in that. Grease interceptor installation required after effective date. This describes owner of the building facility where the FSE is located. Owner operator FSE shall be required to install grease trap, grease interceptor, other facilities to capture fog from waste stream required to discharge POTW, operate and maintain to meet the limits of one hundred milligrams total fog. The one hundred milligrams was the number that we established, looking not only at Des Moines, but other towns, and we felt that that was reasonable. Our pretreatment coordinator looked at it, ran some numbers. We think it's fairly achievable. Exception from grease interceptors, installation requirements for existing facilities. The requirements eight, three, E, four do not apply to the portion of the building facility where FSE exists if FSE has existed and grease interceptor or grease trap in place as of the effective date and then where occupied FSE continues to use the interceptor or trap. Interceptor or trap is the sufficient capacity in design. Interceptor, interceptor or trap is operated and maintained complying with fog discharge limits. So this is saying if you have one, I had a, a gentleman call me and he was rather upset and worried about his grease trap. I went out and looked at it and I explained to him that he does not have to put an outside interceptor in as long as his trap meets that one hundred milligrams per liter limit. Compliance procedures after effective date, any permitted construction under eight, three, E, four should be deemed compliant on issuance of certificate, of compliance or certificate of occupancy by the city building official or designated. Existing FSE, I'm going to get turned off. Existing FSE facility shall be deemed compliant unless determined that the existing grease trap or grease interceptor is incapable of adequately retaining fog. If the interceptor trap deemed in, is deemed inadequate, superintendent, and when it refers to superintendent, it refers to the superintendent of waste management, may order FSE to install adequate grease trap or grease interceptor within a specified time period. FSE is found to contribute fog in quantities above fog discharge limits or the FSE discharges necessitate increased thickness on the POTW or it's above that one hundred milligrams per liter. Again, this is back to that twenty-five rule about cleaning grease traps that we saw in the original PowerPoint. Compliance. Order directing installation of grease interceptor will be written notice of violation including a corrective action. That's order eight, three, E, dash thirteen. Unable to install or replace grease interceptor, FSE can appeal to the superintendent, again, that's the superintendent of waste management, for approval of alternate grease control technology by requesting a hearing. Written request with detailed description of physical or financial constraints in the alternate grease control technology proposed. Adding emulsions, agents or other chemical enzymes to waste stream is not acceptable. This was a common practice for a long time. It was a common practice at Crossroads area. We ended up with pipes out there with no bottoms in them. So we, we have said, you're not going to bring your chemicals in and put them into our- our sewers and destroy our sewer system. If an alternative is not performing adequately, FSE is required to take additional grease controls with measures which may include installing grease interceptor. So if you have it inside grease trap, it's not performing properly, you may be forced to put an interceptor. Exceptional constraints need to be demonstrated by submission of documentation and plats of city sanitary sewer privates, but in relation to the FSC. Show available space and drawings of existing plumbing use for the FSC. Again, that's basically saying if you have a building that's, say, sitting on edge of the property, and you don't have a place outside to put your interceptor, then there are exceptions for that. FSC given exemption from installing property-sized grease interceptors prohibited from installing, using a dishwasher or garbage disposal without approval of the superintendent must comply with conditions of approval. Installing of grease traps and interceptors, traps and interceptors when required to be installed is followed. Interceptor traps installed at expense of owner, operator, or FSC of building, facility in which the FSC is located, which contributes wastewater to POTW. All wastewater streams containing or likely to contain fog within FSC should be directed to grease trap, grease interceptor for discharge POTW given. FSC is responsible to determine appropriate sizing of trap, interceptors, or other grease removal facilities. Discharge from the FSC, again, will not exceed 100 milligrams per liter. This here is a grease trap removal sizing considering P design flow rates. Again, you can set and look at this and go through the formulas and see what your requirements are, that will be something that will be a handout to the FSEs that we deal with.
Larry, I'm wondering if, we only have 10 minutes left.
Okay.
And I'd like to leave a little bit of time for questions. I don't know if there's a statement that you could make that would kind of summarize where we are. I would try, but I, maybe Bob or something that, where we are with fog and what we're trying to accomplish.
We, we, again, are trying to comply with federal regulations and CFR 40. It is important that we do that. I realize this is long and drawn out, we've put a lot of work into this, Jim has worked on it tremendously.
I love fats, oils, and grease.
Well, this ordinance didn't happen overnight, I mean, again, we started May 3 of last year with the first.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I ask-
Mr. Ross.
The first question?
Yeah.
This is obviously going to cause some disruption between landlords and tenants. There's a number of places in town now where restaurants can't be located, it'll just be physically impossible to put a new restaurant in that complies with this ordinance because of block line restrictions and other things. Also, there's existing restaurants where the landlord and the tenant have not yet agreed on who's responsible for both the regulatory fees and the penalty should they occur. And I don't know how that's going to be worked out, but over time, that's one of the things we're going to have to work out. Most landlords will probably put in their lease that the food service establishment is responsible for both the grease trap and for maintenance of the grease trap and for any fines that occur. So your folks will be talking to the operator of the restaurant, but if the operator of the restaurant's not doing what he's supposed to do, then you're going to go see the owner of the building. So those differences are going to be tough.
And I think, you know, if we could keep in mind, the overarching goal of this project is to get the fats, oil, and grease out of our sanitary sewer system that is being put in there by restaurants who either don't have any kind of a grease removal system, a trap or an interceptor, or they have one and don't monitor it and clean it often enough. We're not in the business of making people build things that they don't have to build. We're not in the business of fining people. We are trying to get this material out of our sanitary system that shouldn't be there.
The problem here is people have been used to putting it into the system for the last 200 years.
Right.
And to have somebody come along now and say that's wrong is going to take some education.
Yeah.
And education is key to it.
Yeah.
And we're not asking to go out there and just hammer people. We want to work with people, there's some that needs more work than others, but I think the ordinance is written in such a fashion that will give us some latitude to work with the people like Jim's talking about.
Okay.
It's not, you're in violation, here's your ticket.
Right, what we're trying to do is get the lines cleaned.
Right.
Counsel, do you have any questions at this point, Mr. Lynn?
Larry, you said that 50% of these are causing the sewer overflows, I think these are causing 50% of sewer overflows in your presentation. Is that right?
Generally, yes. And again, I think you're thinking about the footing drain ordinance. If we take out the overflows that are caused by, say, the footing drains, most of our sewer calls are on plugged lines with grease. I mean, and in some areas, it's terrible. We actually spend one week out of every month going around cleaning up behind a given number of restaurants. So I lose 40 hours a week of one of my sewer maintenance workers, or 40 hours a month, one of my sewer maintenance workers, going around cleaning up grease out of lines from restaurants so we don't have-
Well, what I'm trying to say is, in other words, if we fix this, we fix 50% of the overflows.
There's no-
That's not, that's not correct, right?
Yep. We will never, ever fix a sewer, I don't care what you do to it, that there's not a chance of a blockage. Anytime people will put, I don't know, you and I have football helmets down it, or car axles, or just anything, you will never, ever have 100% free of blockages.
Bob, do you, Bob, do you have a, go ahead. My microphone, please, Bob, just so everybody can hear you.
I'll get out of your way with my baby.
I think it clarified. I believe that slide said blockages. So when you go out and, let's say you got dry weather and you have a sewer blockage, chances are it's roots or grease, or somebody has flushed a bunch of rags. Those are the types of things on a routine basis now. The grease is going to deal with the blockage side. That's not all of our overflows. We have overflows that are related to too much water trying to get through a, something, pump station, pipe segment, or something like that. That's what the footing drain deals with, is the extraneous flows that surcharge our lines.
Counsel, Mr. Lynn, go ahead.
I was going to just say, we have about 800 businesses. How many of those are noncompliant, do you think?
We have estimated that there are approximately 800 businesses in towns, that includes schools and churches, daycares, and then all your food establishments beside that. We don't know at this present point. That's the numbers we've got. When we get a person hired that has time to sit down and look all these numbers up, that's part of the program. Black Hawk County has a lot of them, but they don't have all of them.
Larry?
Yes, sir.
You made mention of garbage disposals, and this ordinance directly deals just with food service establishments, not private residential.
Right, yes, no, it has nothing to do with private residents at all.
Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry, Mr. Wel.
Go ahead. One of you.
Yeah, Larry, do other cities have to have this fog program?
Absolutely.
So Cedar Falls has a fog program as well?
Cedar Falls, if you'll notice in the news here, a couple, three weeks ago announced that they were establishing a fog program. Actually, Mr. Kruger, myself, had talked about putting together a educational program and doing this as a dual-city operation on the fog program. I tried to call aisle today, they wouldn't answer. I wanted to have an answer tonight for Bob, but I still want to go that way, we work together on this. And about, the only thing that I could see that would possibly change between Waterloo and Cedar Falls is the discharge limits of 100 milligrams per liter. They might be able to accept higher than that, and I don't know that we can. That's a number that we worked on, we worked on with Bob, and we feel that's where we need to stay at on our program.
Mr. Wel.
Larry, I have two questions. The first one, you were saying that the biggest problem we have with these interceptors is rust. Why wouldn't we build them out of heavy plastic or fiberglass? And the second question is, when you, when you consider there's roughly 800 restaurants in the area, and I understand that'd be the greatest concentration of fog, but if we have some 22,000 residents, shouldn't there be some kind of a training program or information thing for the residents, how they deal with fog?
Okay, let me answer the first question first. When I was talking about rust being a primary problem, that's with grease traps, that are the traps that are interior to a building normally. They do make fiberglass, they do make composite, they make all kinds of things. The older grease traps were naturally just all metal, and the grease will definitely eat metal up, so those are a problem. We eventually, Ron, will have a program, hopefully, to explain to the general public about, we have a lot of people, believe it or not, that will cook with lard, they've told us this, and when they get done, they pour it down the drain, run hot water with it. That's not a good thing because it goes down your line into sewer, city sewer, as Bob says, some sewers have roots, and we have a problem a lot of places around town. That will cling to those roots, and you've got one nasty plug in your line. So yes, we want to educate the public. A lot of people ask us, okay, I'm frying chicken, potatoes, whatever, what do I do with the grease that's left over I don't want to keep? Well, if it's a liquid, if it's a, you know, a mizolo oil or something, you can't put it in your garbage because it's a liquid. If it's a solid, you could put it, you actually can't put it in your garbage. So I don't know if we come up with something for a liquid grease disposal for homeowners or not. I mean, it's, it's something everybody deals with, and I really haven't seen any answers to that question. I think education is the best thing to do.
Sure. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's 5 o'clock, anybody got one last question?
Could I just ask, Larry, could you forward that PowerPoint that you gave tonight?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wants it, I'll be glad to send it to all of you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn. Thanks, Larry.
Ms. Cole? Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the agenda, any questions, discussion? Here and now, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carried. Someone want to take the first request?
Mr. Chairman, item first request is a request from Leisure Services Director, Mr. Huddy. With authorization to make an appointment to the Park Maintenance 2 Forestry from a current civil service list.
We have a motion in a second on that, any discussion? Paul is here, if you have any questions?
I'll just clarify, you might remember filling this fairly recently. We have a probationary employee who was not able, unfortunately, to meet the obligations and requirements of the employment, so we're going back to the same current list and asking to hire her again from that list.
So this is not an additional position?
No, no, that person is already, and let go.
Any other questions? Here and now, need a roll call, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes. That motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lynn?
I move to request for authorization to change the current part-time city attorney position to full-time city attorney position effective January 1, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on this request, is there any discussion on that?
I would just like to mention, I, this has absolutely nothing to do with Mr. Zellifer, but I've got some reservations about just rubber stamping this, going from Jim Walsh to Zellifer without having an opportunity to talk about it and think about it, so I'm not going to support this just for that reason, having nothing to do with the individuals.
Okay.
Mr. Welper?
Mr. Hart? Kind of my sentiments exactly. I was, when we take a look at the different things that the city is involved in, from EPA to being lawsuits, just that whole parameter of what we're involved in, it'd be nice to see some identified areas such as this person's going to do this, this office is going to do this, but kind of see it from a broad perspective of how all of this will work together. And then also see, since we will no longer be, and also the relationship from the former Walsh's office to this position, but I just, I need to see how all of this ties in together first, but it has absolutely nothing to do with the respect level that I have for Mr. Zellifer.
Anyone else? We have a motion in a second?
Before you go on, can I, as the lame duck city attorney, say something? Mr. Zellifer has served in the role he has for 20-plus years and done everything asked of him. I don't expect he'll do all of the work, just as I don't now. There is a need, as with medical care, to always go out and get a specialist when you need a specialist, and we've done that before and will continue to do that with whoever is city attorney in the future. I guess I can understand why that's a question in someone's mind, but in my mind, I haven't done all the work, even if I pretended to from time to time. There's always been others who've done the work, and I think that'll continue with whoever is city attorney.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here and now, we have a motion in a second, need a roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Okay, that motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion in a second, we adjourn, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we adjourn. Thank you.
Committee meeting to order, Madam Clerk, would you please hurry to the wall?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of October 20th.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take the travel requests. First, we have Mohammed Elahi, the traffic engineer to the 2014 Adaptive Traffic Forum in Ames, Iowa, November 18th and 19th, at a cost not to exceed $190. And then we also have a request from Mrs. Ronald Stubber, 125 Amity Drive, requesting a refund amount of $81 that she's been charged for two yard waste carts and has only had one. This is amended from October 20th agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass.
Madam Chairperson, may I take the pre-oths?
Yes, thank you.
We have fire rescue, $8,000 for five physicals for new recruits, fire rescue, $10,500 for seven sets of firefighter turnout gear, leisure services, $6,800 for one BNB BCT 2412 EDO deck over equipment trailer, leisure services, $2,440.93 for 10-ton rooftop compressor replacement. Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here. Thank you. If you'll all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, please. Thank you very much. Our agenda, excuse me, our allegiance tonight is going to be led by Mr. Ron Welper, our fifth ward councilperson. Mr. Welper?
Please join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, also with the approval of the agenda, a move that we approve our minutes of October 20th regular session.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the agenda or minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would like to request that we take item number eight and split that into two separate motions.
Okay, was that made in as a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking for a second for that.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to take item eight, and we will have an 8A and an 8B. I'd like to have a roll call on that, please, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Okay, the motion does pass, so item eight, as it is read on the agenda, will be an 8A and an 8B as we get to it. Are there further comments either on the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a proclamation, an important one tonight. Sharon Juon, I know is here. Vicki, would you also come up? Vicki Grimes.
Oh, you, you, crying out loud. She should ask me tough questions.
Yeah, she's the tough question answerer.
Yeah, she is.
Hi. Put me, the thorn in.
Between roses, yes.
Between roses. All right, we have a proclamation tonight, ladies and gentlemen, proclaiming Cedar Valley United Way Month. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas the Cedar Valley United Way serves people in a 30-mile radius of the Waterloo-Cedar Falls metropolitan area, and whereas the citizens of the Cedar Valley receive great benefits from the many education, income, and health programs provided by its health and human service agencies, and whereas the Cedar Valley United Way brings together businesses, government agencies, community organizations, and committed individuals in a united effort to fund health and human service agencies in the Cedar Valley, and whereas the funding raised in the Cedar Valley for United Way support organizations and charities for the benefit of its citizens and the improvement of the quality of their life. Now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 2014 as Cedar Valley United Way Month, and I urge all citizens to support the Cedar Valley United Way. Sharon, that seems like a short proclamation for such a big project.
We need to add a little bit to it, of course.
I'm going to give that to you.
Thank you very much.
And you got to hold this right here, so.
You didn't.
Did I get this thing?
Oh. Well, I'm, my name is Sharon Juon, a resident of Waterloo, and I have the privilege of being the current Chair of the Board of Directors. To my right is Vicki Grimes, another Waterloo resident, who has passed Chair of the Board, and to the left is the brains of the organization.
Thank you.
Sheila. No, yeah. To my far left is the Executive Director of United Way, and so we thank you so much for this proclamation, thanks to all of you, we appreciate your support. We are so fortunate in this area to have so many programs and to have so much helping our citizens, but there's a couple of things that show that we still have the need for United Way support. Did you know that 21% of children in Blackhawk County still live in poverty? 26% of homeless population is employed, so it's not just the unemployed people. There were 646 children who were abused or neglected in Blackhawk, Buchanan, and Grundy Counties in 2012. These are unfortunately just some of the statistics. 7.1% of households in Blackhawk County speak a language other than English, and finally in Blackhawk County, only 67.5% of 4th graders read proficiently. These are all programs of concern, and United Way helps fund agencies that address these concerns. That's why our job isn't yet done. We raised over $3 million last year, and we're hoping to exceed that this year, because there is still a need. We thank you all for the support, and ask you to dig deep and do what you can to help United Way, in addition to all the other things that all of you help with, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Vicki, thanks, Sheila, thank you guys very much, appreciate it. Thank you for all of you. Okay. The Clerk advises me that we didn't take a voice vote on the minutes of the regular session, is that what we didn't do, Madam Clerk?
The agenda and the minutes, we did.
We did the amended agenda, but we didn't take a voice vote on tonight's agenda, the overall agenda, so.
Yes, we have a motion.
There was a motion and a second on that, it's my mistake, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
So they have to come up and do the presentation again?
No, I hope not, I think they're gone. But we do have another presentation. Selu and Alyssa, are you here? Both of you guys, do you want to come up? Just come on up, come, 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 come. Who is going to tell us what this is?
Okay. For those of you who know me, know that I, I'm pretty shy.
Yeah.
Don't like to talk very much.
Hang onto the mic.
Right? Hang onto the mic. This year, August 16th, we finished, we had a successful event in the Cedar Valley, Third Annual Cedar Valley Seminsteine, and it's, what it is, is a food, beer, and wine experience, where we actually include businesses, restaurants, like Out House Cafe, and Brown Bottle, and also our Hy-Vee chefs are on display, and the whole idea is just to show the Cedar Valley what we can bring to them as culinary expertise, also with food, beer, and wine as a whole. So this year, we completed our third year, had a very successful year. All the proceeds of the event benefit the Waterloo Center for the Arts by the Friends for the Arts Center, so thank you to Ken, because we've worked together for three years on this, and we've made this event, it's just been phenomenal. So if you haven't come, I invite you to come next year, it's going to be even better, number four. So the Cedar Valley Hy-Vee stores are presenting, Friends of the Arts Center check for $9,354.17.
That's fabulous.
On behalf of the Friends, I'd like to accept this generous donation and acknowledge all the work and effort that Hy-Vee does to support the community, and specifically the Arts Center through this great event for the community. They spent countless hours organizing, developing marketing plans, working with their food and wine and beer distributors, and they just do a great job making this a great event for the community, and we appreciate the donation, and we will use that to help fund scholarships, exhibits, and just overall culture and art for the Cedar Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Thanks. Just as I'm walking back, I would be remiss if I didn't say, Selu, to you and to all of the Hy-Vee store managers, what a great community partner Hy-Vee is in the community, both Waterloo and Cedar Falls, and ICU all over the place, so thank you for all of your community, giving back to the community that you and the Hy-Vee stores do across the community. Thank you very, very much. You bet. Also, I'll tell Sharon and your friends, you're welcome to stay for the entire program, you won't offend anybody if you choose not to, now would be a good time to not to, if you would.
You're not offended.
Okay, I'm not offended.
Selu, shy, huh?
Yeah, yeah. All right, good stuff tonight, ladies and gentlemen, what a great way to kick things off, but it is time to get into the regularly scheduled agenda.
Mr. Mayor, a move that we received, place on file and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B11, also with the approval of the consent agenda, a move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by the Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $3,205,289.88. Three, comma, two, zero, five, comma, two, eight, nine, point, eight, eight.
Second.
Council, do you have any concerns or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Noel, on six and seven, the question I have is, does this change either of these from an economic development to urban renewal?
No, they'd both be staying as they are, or as they originally proved, they're both shown as blighted TIFs areas.
Okay, so they're urban renewal tips?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
I just want to point out too, item number four, I got a couple of calls today about that whole proposal out there on the Cedar Terrace area, and that that date was originally scheduled for the 10th, has been moved to the 24th, because I think there was some folks who were planning on coming to that, so they don't need to come until the 24th.
Very good, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Schmidt. Are there further comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, that's a roll call, vote please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
I have several people to recognize, though, tonight, please, if you'll bear with me just a bit, these are important recognitions, I believe. We have several promotions in the Police Department, and I want to recognize Officer Sean Monroe, Robert Duncan, and Steve Bowes have promoted, been promoted to the rank of Sergeant, effective November 1st. Sergeants Aaron McClellan and Greg Fangman and Jason Thicker have been promoted to the rank of Lieutenant, and in the Fire Department, engineer, appointment to the engineer position is Josh Powers and Chris Charlie, have been promoted to Fire Lieutenants, and Ryan Vestal has been reappointed to the Board of Electrical Examiners on our Boards and Commissions, as has Karen Atwood, Forrest Dilavu, and David Choco to the International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals, and reappointment of Michael Hanson as an alternate to the International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals. So to all of you that have volunteered to be on our Boards and Commissions, we appreciate that. Without your volunteering for service, we wouldn't be able to do business as we do in the city, so thank you for those hours that you volunteer. All right, moving ahead, Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a, I'd like to make a motion or receive and file proof of publication in those public hearing, and that's a request of Valentine Enterprises LLC at 729 West Airline Highway for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the establishment of a new auto recycling salvage yard located at 729 West Airline Highway.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number two?
I have not received any, Noel, do you have any on file?
Okay, we have not received any written objections to item number two, but the hearing is open, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this project, you may do so at this time, just please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, we didn't receive any new petitions on file, there was one that was previously submitted, a petition of opposition back in December.
Okay, and that was submitted to planning and zoning?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anderson, how many, Noel, how many signatures were on that petition, and do we know what percentage?
I know it was underneath the 20%, I believe there was about 40 signatures on it, if I recall.
Forty signatures, and that's under 20%?
Yeah, because it's a long, narrow property, so there's a lot of farmland on one side, and there's some industrial properties on the other. But there is, with the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation of Denial, a You won't offend anybody if you choose not to. Now would be a good time to not to, if you would. Okay, I'm not offended.
Say Lou, shy, huh?
Yeah. All right. Good stuff tonight, ladies and gentlemen. What a great way to kick things off. But it is time to get into the regularly scheduled agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items one, A through B, eleven. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by the Finance Chair.
The bills this week are three million, two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, three, comma, two zero, five, comma, two eight, nine point eight eight.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any concerns or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Noel, on six and seven, the question I have is, does this change either of these from an economic development to urban renewal?
No, they'd both be staying as they are, or as they were originally approved. They're both, they're both shown as blighted TIFs areas.
Okay, so they're urban renewal TIFs?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
I just want to point out too, item number four, I got a couple of calls today about that whole proposal out there on the Cedar Terrace area and that that date was originally scheduled for the tenth and has been moved to the twenty-fourth because I think there was some folks who were planning on coming to that.
Aye.
They don't need to come until the twenty-fourth.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Schmidt. Are there further comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. I have several people to recognize though tonight. Please, if you'll bear with me just a bit, these are important recognitions, I believe. We have several promotions in the Police Department. And I want to recognize Officer Sean Monroe, Robert Duncan, and Steve Bowes have promoted, been promoted to the rank of Sergeant effective November first. Sergeants Aaron McClellan and Greg Fangman and Jason Thicker have been promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. And in the Fire Department, engineer, appointment to the engineer position is Josh Powers and Chris Charlie have been promoted to Fire Lieutenants. And Ryan Vestal has been reappointed to the Board of Electrical Examiners on our Boards and Commissions, as has Karen Atwood, Forrest Dilavu, and David Choco to the International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals. And reappointment of Michael Hanson as an alternate to the International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals. So, to all of you that have volunteered to be on our Boards and Commissions, we appreciate that. Without your volunteering for service, we wouldn't be able to do business as we do in the city. So, thank you for those hours that you volunteer. All right, moving ahead. Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a, I'd like to make a motion or receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's a request of Valentine Enterprises LLC at seven twenty-nine West Airline Highway for a site plan amendment to the M-two-P Planned Industrial District to allow for the establishment of a new auto recycling salvage yard located at seven twenty-nine West Airline Highway.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number two?
I have not received any. Noel, do you have any on file?
Okay, we have not received any written objections to item number two. But the hearing is open, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this project, you may do so at this time. Just please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. Mr. Anderson. Mr. Anderson, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. We didn't receive any new petitions on file. There was one that was previously submitted, a petition of opposition back in December.
Okay, and that was submitted to planning and zoning?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anderson, how many, Noel, how many signatures were on that petition? And do we know what percentage?
I know it was underneath the twenty percent. I believe there was about forty signatures on it, if I recall.
Forty signatures and that's under twenty percent?
Yeah, because it's a long, narrow property. So, there's a lot of farmland on one side and there are some industrial properties on the other. But there is, with the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation of Denial, a supermajority is required either way.
Okay, but just to be clear, if two sides are not residential, if you've got forty signatures, are you telling me that's below the twenty percent?
The signatures were all from the south for the most part. There are some houses to the north, very northwest corner. But again, it's a, you'd have to see the configuration of the lot. It did not go over the twenty percent.
Thank you.
But it still requires a supermajority.
Right.
So, either way. Okay, hearing, no comments from the audience? Is there any? I'm sorry. Okay.
My name's Jim Droudie. I live at eight forty-three West Airline Highway. And I oppose this salvage title permit. We've been to several meetings, the residents of that area, and the message is, no, we don't want it. So, please consider that and hopefully this will not pass.
Thank you, Jim.
Leah Morrison, twenty-two-ten Falls Avenue, Waterloo. I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I wanted to let you know we've seen this topic twice. Originally, we tabled it for more information. The second time, we denied it. And one of the key factors for me in voting on this topic was the applicant's continued noncompliance with different things that they've been asked. And so, when you're considering this, we would ask you to consider the applicant's history of noncompliance.
Thanks, Saad.
Rick Westfall, twenty-two-thirty-two Avon Avenue, Waterloo. I think probably tonight, when you all go home, you can turn on your tap water and feel reasonably comforted by the fact that you have good city water. We people out there that live near the junkyard have wells out there, so we don't have that same comfort. I wish you would consider that, as well as some of the other comments that people may have. The people out here in the audience that are against this junkyard, would you please stand so they can see who we are? Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Good evening, members of the council, mayor. I'm Tim Lewis. I represent Mr. Hogalot. Mr. Hogalot has, despite some of the contentions been made, he has made every compliance that the Planning and Zoning Department has requested of him. We have, and I apologize for my voice. I've been in court all afternoon. We have given him a signed consent to all of the requirements that are met. This property is zoned properly for a salvage yard. Other salvage yards have been approved out in this area. We've had the DNR look at this property in the past, and they actually have said that this type of a, of a use is a good use for this property. We believe that he's met all the requirements. He'll be a good neighbor. He, we don't see where there can be any problem with this, and we really don't understand why it can't be granted because it is zoned for this. We've met all the, all the terms and conditions, and we will continue to meet those. And if something's not being done properly, there are enforcement provisions that can be done by the city. So, we believe that the City Council should approve this.
Thanks, Tim.
Hey, Craig, is that mic working?
William Smith, twenty-two-sixty Ashland Avenue. I've been having a hard time hearing the back. I thought I'd move up front, see if I could hear better, but it's the same. So, I don't know if you can turn the volume up on your whatever. Now, we've been through these meetings, meetings, and meetings. My property is adjacent to Leonard's. And we've been fighting this. There've been thirty-one or better petitioners that opposes this. Planning and zoning had a whole, a meeting. They denied it. And it's just, it seems to be going on and on. You see the folks that stood up here? We don't want that in our neighborhood. We've got alters. We've got fowlers at Hillpiper's now. Nobody knew nothing about fowlers moving in the Hillpiper's as a junkyard. Moved off of La Porte Road. We've got numerous junkyards. We're trying to bring our house values up or our property values up. Our taxes go up, but our values are going to drop. We're asking everyone here to think about it, the council, our, the people that's lived there for years. We don't want this in our neighborhood. And I don't know how many more meetings we're going to have to have. We'll probably end up in court over or something. Thank you.
Thanks, William.
My name's Robert Burke. I live at nine fifty Midland Street. As Mr. Hogalot's lawyer said himself, that there's numerous other auto salvage yards around. We don't need another auto salvage. We need a Menards or something like that out there, like we were supposed to get to begin with. That's all I can say.
Thanks, Robert. We're still working on that, by the way.
Chris Droudie, eight forty-three West Airline Highway. And I know some of us kind of feel like we're a broken record with some of the things that we keep saying about this plan. One thing that I would like to bring up is that back in August, actually, I got this from Mr. Burke, the newspaper was saying that, that there was rejected new salvage yard licenses for Turnier Recycling on Fulton Street and Litzkau Auto Recyclers. Those were both rejected by City Council. And so, in light of that, if we're rejecting other salvage yards, why aren't we rejecting this one too? We have had several neighborhood meetings to talk about what we could do to prevent this from happening. And I guess one of my concerns is, having been born and raised and worked in Waterloo my whole life, with all of the attention that keeps getting, that keeps coming through for the improvement of the Highway sixty-three corridor and everything, an airline highway in itself is pretty, it's a pretty nice road. Well, when you have this salvage yard that would be put in within a half a mile of Highway sixty-three, I sure as heck wouldn't want to have that be the first thing I see as I'm traveling to the airport, which we keep trying to promote. So, that's kind of one of my things. The other thing is that our property is, just falls, one corner of it falls within the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius, I think, that, that has been talked about. And, and we have a well, and our water is very good. But we do have concerns about the runoff and how, how the, I know they drain all the fluid and all this. They, you know, like Tim said, there's all kinds of stuff that they do to prevent environmental contamination and stuff. But it's, you know, we've seen how some of the, some of these areas are, are surveyed and stuff by, you know, the city, and I have real concerns about that. And so, I, I really don't want to see this salvage yard, or, you know, the permit for it based on environmental issues and the history of that property to begin with. So, I guess that's it. But I'm opposed to it.
Thanks, Chris. Dennis, I saw you were standing. You want to? No? Okay.
Hello. Dennis Clark, twenty-two oh-four Ashland Avenue. Just short of twenty acres is the little piece of world that Mary and I have. We're south. We are in the waterway. We are on a well. We are affected by what happens in that property. There is a history with it, a very negative one, which makes us ultra-sensitive to the potential that could happen. As far as the DNR, I would, I would challenge the words that the DNR would approve or think that's a best use. The, the right situation, it could be, but the right situation existed before, and it was a disaster and continues to be. So, with that thought in mind, I reject that concept. And the other thing is, we're not, we're not really looking at saying that this can't be an industrial area. But I would challenge the concept that it's intended to be, you're having a request. You're having something beyond what it is or could be used for. And I would want you all to keep that in mind. It, that it could be, but right now, it's just a request. It's not, in my mind, something that's just a given. And that would be where the wisdom of those that are making the decisions, please consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dennis.
Jim Lawless, twenty-two, two thousand and two Ashland, just south of this property that we're discussing tonight. Two years ago, I made an addition to my house. I've been living there since nineteen sixty-nine. And I was informed that I could get a tax abatement because we live in a blighted area. Since that time, a brand-new house was built north of me, real high value. Another one south of me was built on, on some abandoned lots. Another house was built up at the corner from me. And we're trying to improve this neighborhood out here. And I don't think we're going to do it if we have a salvage yard out there and, and that is allowed to operate out there. So, thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you, Jim.
Molly Plunkett, twenty-one thirty-five Ashland Ave. I would just like to kind of reiterate what Jim just said. I built a brand-new house in close proximity of where he would like to put the salvage yard. And I said in the last meeting that, I know you guys don't have anything to do with property values and tax assessments and things like that, but I find it hard to believe that my home can have a assessed value with taxes of sixty-nine hundred dollars and somebody's going to put a junkyard within close proximity of me. I know that they wouldn't do that out on Green Hill Road, and we are doing everything we can to make our area better. We love our area, and we try to bring people to our side to let them see that, that all the goodness that is there and all the things that we are trying to do to make it beautiful. And I would just implore that you please think about that before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Hogalot. I'm the one who recites at seven twenty-nine West Airline Highway. I'm the one requesting a permit. What I've been hearing is the requests by numerous people that it not be granted, that permit. And you might add to that, since they were talking about numbers of people who do not want it, ask yourself the question, does might make right? Who has the right in this particular situation? Now, the Planning and Zoning asks for certain items so that it could be presented as, and permitted as such. And we're more willing and happy to do that, which we did. In this paper article that was written recently, it talked about that very thing, that the Planning and Zoning agreed and said that they agreed to the fact of permitting the, the permit. But it was denied by the other group of people that meant. And it was denied on behalf of those who live in the area. So, I have a question about all those people who live in the area. When you buy or purchase a piece of property, do you not ask for an opinion before you invest your money? And if you did, and you found out that there was a commercial piece of property next to you, and you went ahead and spent your money and built your home, five hundred thousand, as one person said they did, knowing all the time that this piece of property was zoned, industrial, commercial? So, it seems to me that these same people now are coming to you and asking you to deny my right to possibly sell it by getting a permit for that. There's something unique about this piece of property. On the east side, this complete agricultural field is being farmed. You might ask these same people, when this person who bought this property and it's agricultural, is he going to continue to farm it, or is he going to sell it to someone who wants to do something other than that? Build whatever. In your area of what it could be used for, there's numerous items that it can be used for. But if I read this correctly, the people can come forward.
Okay, I just need you to make a final statement, if you can, Mr. Hogalot.
Okay. The responsibility of the purchase seems to me is the people that bought should have gotten an opinion prior to that. And if I'm not mistaken, I have a legal right. They have a right, yes, for sure. But you have everything in place to guard their right and their privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Hogalot. Thank you very much. All right. No, sir, I'm sorry. You, you have one opportunity. Thank you. Yeah.
Hi, I am Rick Kaiser. I actually own Canem Service, which owns four thirty-five and four thirty-seven West Airline Highway. I am the guy that owns the hundred and forty acres. I'm really worried about it because a hundred acres are tillable and forty acres back there are wetlands. And yes, it is an investment for me. I am worried about a salvage yard coming and rooting my farmland. I have no intention of selling that land to somebody. I'm here to farm. It's what I want to do. So, I'm asking you guys to protect my land there and the wildlife and everything that's back there and the forty acres of wetland. That's why we want to build a pond and stuff out back. So, I'm asking you to help me protect it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion then to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and also the Recommendation of Denial of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending, ordinance number five oh seven nine is amended, City Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment on certain property. Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions? Would you like to make any comments at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
A yes vote then approves this request and no vote denies.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. That's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Hurt?
No.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Very good. Thank you, counsel. The request to rezone this or to allow the cycle, the salvage yard is denied unanimously. Thank you very much. I'll give everyone an opportunity that came for this particular hearing. If you'd like to stay, that's great. If you would like to leave, you may do so now. We're going to continue on.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hurt?
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the purchase of two two thousand and fifteen Chevrolet Colorado trucks. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file title number three?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the purchase of two trucks for leisure services? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing. Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, et cetera. Second.
It's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file an instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to leisure to Leisure Services Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, could you tell us about the bids, please?
Yes, there was an estimate of $59,000 for both vehicles, 59,000,000,000. The first bid was from Community Motors Company Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The crew cab bid was for $29,383, 29,383,000. The extended cab is for $27,681, 27,681,000. The next bid was from Jerry Rolling Motors of Waverly, Iowa. The crew cab was for $29,720, 29,720,000. The extended cab was for $27,684, 27,684,000. The third bill, third bid was from Rydell Chevrolet of Waterloo, Iowa. The crew cab was for $29,699, 29,699,000, and the extended cab is for $27,997, 27,997,000. The final bid was from Witham Auto Center of Laporte City, Iowa. The crew cab was for $30,633.16 plus fees, 30,633,16. The extended cab was for $28,783.60 plus fees, 28,783,60.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the rental of three motor graders to support snow operations.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number four?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the rental of three motor graders? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second.
It's a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing on a request of Daniel Fensel for a site plan amendment to the R2C-Z one and two-family residence conditional zoning district to allow for the construction of a new office building and parking lot located at 1209 Dundee Avenue.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we have any written objections on file to item number five?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the building of an office building at 1209 Dundee? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file recommendation of approval of planning, programming and zoning commission.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079 is amended, city Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property.
Second.
Madam Clerk, this one's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
No.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
The motion carries also. Resolutions, please. Let's do six and seven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
Six, I move we adopt a resolution approving award of contract to KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls in the amount of $34,000, $37,400 for the Amesboro Avenue and Downing Avenue traffic safety improvements. And number seven, another resolution approving request by Midwest Development for the 14-lot final plat of Audubon Heights Fourth Edition, generally located east of Hot Road and north of West Shalhoub Road, to allow for the construction of 14 new single-family homes.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions on six or seven? Questions or comments? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
There you go. Very good. Thank you. Eight A, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I move that we adopt resolution eight A, which is a resolution receiving and placing on file the retirement of James Walsh as city attorney effective December 31, 2014.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? That one's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Motion carries. Yes, sir?
Eight B.
Okay. Would somebody take eight B, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I, resolution eight B is a resolution receiving and placing on file the appointment of David Zella for a city attorney effective January 1, 2015.
Second.
Very good. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, was there a second?
I did.
Okay. Motion and a second. Yes, sir.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road.
Yes, sir.
My question is, why are we are appointing Mr. Zella for tonight? We seem like we've got a little extra time. This is a position that's of great importance to the city of Waterloo, and I think it should be looked at a little deeper than just moving the line up a little bit further. We, when we do the mayor and the council and the chief and several other people, we usually have more than one candidate, and maybe we need that opportunity to just take a look, not that, you know, that he's a bad man or anything, but we may have better options out there. You know, we've pulled the same line here for many years, and maybe it's time to make a switch.
Thank you, John. Counsel, do you have comments regarding eight B?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I just want to say first, for the public record, I absolutely have a great amount of respect for Attorney Zellafer. Worked with him on several different projects, appreciated his advocacy on 657A and amongst all the other responsibilities and duties that he served for the city. I guess the challenge I have with this is taking a look at the overall workings of our legal department, moving him to a full-time city attorney, which I don't have a problem with, but taking a look at the other aspects from the contractual work. You know, do we actually need a legal team for the city with two full-time attorneys? But just when we take a look at the scope, we have EPA challenges we're dealing with, we have continuous suits and stuff that we have to deal with every day, but I'm just wondering, is it a time to take a step back and take a look at the overall look or view of the legal department for the city of Waterloo to see if there's some other things that we may be able to do? But I absolutely have the most respect for Dave Zellafer, but it's just the way that we went about this that I was concerned about.
And let me speak to that both for the audience's position and the rest of counsel. In that directive, I think, is the continuing of the relationship, contractual relationship with Chris Wendlin at the Clark Butler Walsh Hayman Law Firm. As has been stated emphatically, Mr. Walsh will be retiring from that law firm and will have no connection with it whatsoever. Chris Wendlin has done contract work for us for a long time, and I quite honestly can't imagine us pulling the plug on Mr. Wendlin right now. We're in the middle of a whole bunch of things that Mr. Hart just mentioned that Chris Wendlin is, I was going to say knee-deep, is waist-deep in trying to help us through. The other contractual issues that we have, whether it be for personnel, labor, financial, many different things that we can't get handled at the local level, we contract with Allers and Cooney out of Des Moines, which is one of the premier municipal law firms in the entire state. So you are certainly, as I always urge you to vote your conscience, but I think Mr. Zellafer has performed well, is the obvious choice to take over as the full-time city attorney, and with the support team that's in place through Mr. Wendlin and through Allers and Cooney, I think we're in good shape.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt. I'm sorry.
Can I just ask a quick question, and then I'll yield the floor? Just a question I have. So prior, we had the services of Mr. Walsh, Mr. Wendlin, the staff at that office. So now, do we still have, we have Wendlin, and then what is the, I mean, are we still getting the same services for the same price? Has there been any contractual changes with that partnership? So, I mean, those are just things that I'm just curious about, and I haven't seen those.
The proposal is that there will be no contractual changes with the firm and that Mr. Wendlin will continue to do that work. Am I stating that right? Mr. Walsh, please.
Jim Walsh, lame duck city attorney. I'm aware of the concern about an appointment of an important officer to the city council. If this were a new gentleman or a new lady coming in, I would be right with you, saying, let's wait and do some more interviewing. Mr. Zellafer's been with the city for over 20 years. He's been under my direct supervision for the last, for my entire time here. We're not changing the connections we have with the Allers firm or with the Clark Butler firm, I'll call it now, across the street, except I'm not going to be there. I'm retiring from the private practice of law at the same time, so you'll still have the team you had minus me. This is a budget-neutral proposal, as far as I can see. It won't cost the city any more than it did before. I have asked for 60 days to do a transition with Dave and the others to make sure there's nothing that drops through the loopholes. The city council is, as you know, free to change city attorneys anytime they want. So this isn't a permanent arrangement. This is something, so we're sure to have a smooth transition. And I did ask for the timing to be moved so that we would know what was going to happen. And of course, if next year or election time, somebody wants to make a change, you're free to do it.
Just to complete a thought and reiterate to the public, I have absolutely no problem with Dave Zellafer. It is just the process that we've gone through and taken a different look and a different approach, but I absolutely have no problem with Dave Zellafer.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lynn.
I'm biased. Our family has known the Zellifers for 80 years. You couldn't have picked...
I didn't know Dave was that old.
You couldn't have picked a better person to be city attorney.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Thanks for that support. Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to start off by saying this is no reflection on Mr. Zellafer, who I've known a long time, or Mr. Wendlin, or Mr. Walsh, or Mr. Walsh's firm, but it seems like this is one of, you know, a real small number of critical positions in the city. And, you know, over the seven years I've been on the city council during budget times, I've raised the question on a fairly regular basis about, in the 23 years now that Mr. Walsh's firm has been providing our legal service, have we gone out for competitive deals? Have we gone out for other alternatives? Have we looked at what other cities have done? And I basically was always told that Jim Walsh is a walking knowledge book of municipal law, which I wouldn't argue with at all, but, so therefore, it didn't, you know, didn't warrant taking a look at some other alternatives. And, you know, in my business world, we're always looking at alternatives and always looking to make sure we're getting the best deal, the best bang for the buck, and that's why I asked those questions then. And it seems to me now that, you know, we're in this position where Mr. Walsh is going to retire, that we have an opportunity here to step back, take a breath. Mr. Walsh has given us 60 days' notice. What I'd really, what I'd like to see is appointing Dave Zellafer as an interim city attorney, say through June 30th, and that would give us 80 days. I'd like to see us take a look at putting together a committee of retired or soon-to-retire attorneys, their input on some of these issues, and also anybody else, either from the city or from the business community, that'd like to be involved in this. But it just seems to me, we, you know, we've got a golden opportunity here now to take a look at this and to rush to some kind of decision for no apparent good reason, is just not good business sense. Since we started talking about this Thursday morning, I've talked to city council members from Cedar Rapids and Dubuque. In those two communities, they have full-time city employees that are their city attorneys. I don't have any idea if that's a better model than what we're doing. I have no idea how that would lay out budget-wise or performance-wise, but the only way you would know is by, you know, taking a look at it. I've also had conversations with some council members in Cedar Falls, and I think some of us are aware of the fact they made a change with their legal department here, I think, within the last six months, and I think now would be a great time to have a conversation with them and see if we could have a metropolitan law team, or I don't care what you call it, but a lot of times I think there's a way where Waterloo and the county can work together on some things, maybe in the public, public safety arena or something like that. But here, I understand the county and the city are governed by a lot of different laws and a lot of different ordinances, but it seems like this might be a great opportunity for us and Cedar Falls to work together. And, you know, there was an article, I think it was in Sunday's Courier, about the decision by the probe board on the Isle of Capri, and we're going to be getting, I think, a $500,000 or $600,000 hit to the budget that maybe some people had planned and plugged into our reserve fund, but I certainly hadn't. And so it just seems for a lot of different reasons, now's the time we ought to be taking a look at this. You know, Thursday morning when this was brought up, and again tonight, it was mentioned that, well, we're right in the middle of a lot of things. I think, you know, we're right in the middle of a lot of things all the time. That's just part of the joy of local government. We're always going to be involved in some kind of high-level negotiations or high-level discussions with the federal government or the state government, or lawsuits, or whatever. So I just think that we really need to step back and take a look at this. And the other thing Thursday morning you mentioned is, you know, waiting until after the election next year, next November, because possibly there could be up to three new council members, possibly there could be a new mayor, and allow them to do that. Well, I think what would make better sense is to do it now, when you've got a reasonably seasoned city council. We've got a couple of new members, but they're seasoned individuals. The rest of the council's been a while. You've been in your seat for five years. I think, you know, it would be much, much better sense to have us sit down and take a look at this now while we've got time to do it. So that's my reason for making the motion.
Very good. Further comment, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm saddened by Jim Walsh leaving, because even though I've only been here a few months, what I've learned from Jim Walsh and talking to him and about him has been nothing other than positive. And it's sad to see somebody with his talents go. And if I could vote no that would keep him here, that's not going to happen, though, because I understand why he wants to go, and all the more power to him. And secondly, Dave Zellifer is nothing other than, to me, very qualified, not just knowing Dave, but knowing his work and how astute he is and how he takes his job seriously. And that's, I've known him for a long time, even when I was doing work in child protective services and his stature there. And I think if we lose this opportunity to appoint him now, we lose what Mr. Walsh referred to as that transition period where there can be a carryover from him into Mr. Zellifer being up to speed on everything that's necessary for him to take on that full-time job. So I'm-
Thank you. Mr. Morrison? Any further comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I could add just one more thing. I have, and I believe Councilman Jones brought this up during the budget hearings, but I have talked to attorneys from several of the law firms in Waterloo and in the metropolitan area, and they have an interest in taking a look at this opportunity. They're not willing to make any kind of commitment, because we don't really have, you know, a good idea of what we might be talking about. But there certainly is interest within the other law firms in the city. And again, having nothing, nothing to do with the Clark Butler law firm, that's not the issue. The issue is taking a look at it. And to go back to what Mr. or Councilman Morrissey was saying, you know, part of my motion would be to have Dave Zellifer appointed to this through June 30th, so he would continue that. And there's absolutely nothing that says Dave Zellifer would end up with this position. That's the purpose of the vetting. And so he would be, could be an applicant like anybody else, and I think that's the way we should proceed.
Okay. You mentioned the word "motion." There is a motion and a second on the floor now to appoint Dave Zellifer as a city attorney. We have to dispose of that before we can do anything further. Are there further comments from council? Madam Clark, it's a roll call.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good. The motion passes, and Mr. Walsh will be here through the end of the year, and Mr. Zellifer will take over as the full-time city attorney January 1st. Thank you, council. Number nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The motion received and filed considering passed for the third time in adopting ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by adding new Article F, Foundation Drain Disconnection of Chapter III Sewer Regulations of Title VIII Public Utilities for the Foundation Drain Disconnection for the Drain Program.
Second. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Ladies and gentlemen, this is technically the third reading. This was a hearing to begin with. We have had two hearings already, but if there is someone here tonight that wants to speak to the council regarding this item, I will allow that. Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
We do have two that are signed up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we do have. I overlook that. Jerry, and you're on there for five minutes, so go ahead.
Thank you. Jerry Thornsberry, 704 Sheridan Road. Tonight, I want to say, first off, I'm in agreement with the ordinance. I know that it's necessary. But I wanted to share some thoughts about the rerouting of existing homeowners' drains and the potential to cause unintended consequences. I wonder about the increase of water discharge from newly-installed sump pumps. As we all know, it is a common practice for homeowners to discharge their sump pumps, generally speaking, into their yards. The idea is that water seeking its own level will either infiltrate into their own yard or it'll find its way to a storm sewer. Now, let's consider the impact of our more frequently occurring rain events. With large quantities of water falling in relatively short time, a real potential exists to cause unintended consequences for those neighbors on the downhill side of an upstream water discharge path. In my opinion, understanding how one neighbor's actions impact another neighbor within a whole system is critical so as not to contribute to the development of unintended neighborhood consequences. So my suggestion is for the entire area, District 15 and 16, to be managed as a holistic systems project, where the city is not only overseeing the individual homeowner's footings, but is also monitoring the overall impact of this mitigation work across these two districts, especially in the domain of stormwater management and their drainage plans. Neighbors in the affected blocks need to be approached for their input based on personal knowledge as to how their upstream neighbor's water discharge might affect their property. What if new ponds appear in a neighbor's yard due to upstream discharge causing a ray of potential damage? Who would be liable for making those corrective repairs? I see this as a critical project, given the significant rerouting of water discharge being ordered by this ordinance. And to date, I've not heard any discussion directing city officials to conduct a systematic review of drainage plans for the involved neighborhoods. Let's keep the overall goal in mind, reducing clean water from reaching our sewer treatment plant. A mandatory goal, but one that must not be executed at the expense of one neighbor potentially flooding the basement of another, a significant unintended consequence. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. And Mr. Charles Huer, is that right?
My name's Craig Agelston.
Oh, I'm sorry, Craig. Okay. Is there a Charles Huer? How are you? Okay. You're, okay, thanks, Charles. Okay.
Craig Agelston, 1446 Lyon Avenue here in Waterloo. If I appear to be nervous, I am nervous. I'm nervous because I always had a lot of sympathy for minorities, and now I'm a member of one, because my house was built in 1950. And the EPA says, hey, you guys got to do something. If you don't do it, we're going to hang this thread over your head. You're going to pay more in utilities. Well, I kind of object to that. At the present time, almost four months of my pension goes for property taxes. And you want me to pay some more because my drain goes into the sewer system? I object to that. And I have another question. How many of you on the council will be affected by this? Oh, it's easy to make a decision when it doesn't affect you, isn't it? But I happen to volunteer at Kipro School, and I've got a lot for an hour a week, and I see that on the approximate, 65% of the children in our school system are on free lunch. What does that tell you? That tells you that the middle class here does not have a lot of extra money to spend to do a drain, and so I drain my, the property on the other side of me, on Hammond, is lower than mine. So I drain my water into their backyard. What do they do with their water, then? Where's that water going? It's got to go someplace. I think if the EPA says, hey, you got to do this, we should say, okay, you guys can pay for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
My name is Charles Huer. I live at 1936 Coachman Drive here in Waterloo. I want to thank those of you that have voted against this ordinance already, and I want to encourage anybody else that can to vote against it. I lived at the same residence I just mentioned for 18 years of my life so far, which is the majority of it. I live there today. I lived there when I was a child. I rent the house from my parents. I've lived in this neighborhood for about 29 years of my life, which is, you know, not as much as some, but a good amount. There's a lot of different reasons why I ask you to vote against this. First off is cost. I am not confident that a $2,000 grant would cover a good chunk of the work needed on many houses. I just had a discussion with a coworker earlier today. He had a sump pump, sump pit, a little more work done than just that to his home, to his basement, and his bill was $10,000. And that was before we see a lot of people getting their work done at the same time. I also do not appreciate being told your other option is to pay a $50 per month surcharge when my current monthly water and sewer garbage bill are 35, 40, 45 bucks a month. That's doubling it. On a more philosophical level, I think this shows a lack of freedom. I think it's nearly coercion of property owners to force them to make large-scale changes and possibly, possibly needless ones to their homes. And I don't think that's a good thing for our city government to do or any government to do. Another thing I have a concern for is lack of concern for the neighborhoods. My house has not had any stormwater or flooding damage at any time, and I would like to avoid having a chance of that by making a lot of large-scale changes to the drainage system. My front yard is pretty flat. It's pretty high ground over there near the water tower on University Avenue. But my backyard is a slope downward, right into somebody else's backyard and their house, only a couple of blocks of space away. My parents live downhill from me. I don't want my whole neighborhood to be pumping their rainwater out of their basement and headed downhill to flood out my relatives. Let's see. I think the sanitary sewer system is currently the best option for getting rid of this water in this neighborhood with all its hills and yet also high-ground, flat areas. There are other factors, I feel the way I do. I'm extremely concerned that there could be bad effects from having many property owners disconnect in a fairly short timeframe, as this lady mentioned. Within the last 10 years, I have seen a multi-day power outage due to a thunderstorm, and if memory serves, I think there was plenty of rain with that thunderstorm. And so I'm concerned that that could affect how well your pumps work and things like that. I've seen Stephan Avenue, near the Hardees on University Avenue, collect a couple feet of water during one rainstorm a year or two ago. These things come to my mind when we're talking about where the water's going to go. One thing that I didn't write down here, but I do need to mention is, in my early 30s, I am looking at possibly investing in a, buying a home. Right now, I rent. This is going to affect whether I do that in Waterloo, whether I do that in this part of Waterloo. It's going to affect other people I know and whether they even look for a house in this part of Waterloo, relatives, friends. So again, I urge you to vote against this ordinance, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Charles, very much. If someone else, just approach the microphone, please.
Matt McNeil. I presently reside at 1117 Hammond Avenue. I moved in there in February, and I wasn't aware of it until we started getting the rains. I have, I don't know how many times, had to move stuff in my basement. I had to pull out carpet and throw it out because the water is coming through the foundation along the driveway and along the east side of my house. And I'm told that you aren't going to do anything over in that side of town. When Q3 was putting the new gas line through there, they cut the top out of my sewer line. And I wasn't aware of it. They sent in a plumber to run a camera down in there, and you run a camera down in there, and I got a steady flow of water, drain-off water running through the sanitary sewer. I went over to St. Vincent de Paul and purchased a dehumidifier. I take out an average of 25 pints of water a day with that dehumidifier. I don't own the house. The fellow that owns the house has rented it to me, and he's moved to Dyert. I had three contractors come in and look at doing the east wall and then along the driveway. One of them was, I don't know, around $2,000, another one was around $3,000. The last one had come in that I favor most, was really honest with me, was McGee Construction, $3,500 just to do the east wall and the south wall. All of my drainage comes from West 11th down. It's all downhill. My house sits on a terrace, and here I'm sitting. And the other thing that irks me, who's getting billed for this water drainage into this sewer right now? I am, because I pay the water bill. And it looks like that I may end up paying the $50.
Thanks, Matt.
I don't think it's fair.
Okay.
My name is Herbert Wheeler, and I live at 1017 Dundee Avenue. And I don't object to what you're trying to do, but I object to the way it's being done. I'm in Service Area 16, and I have a neighbor just one block away from me, or half a block away from me, that had exactly done what he's got to have done. I've got a picture here of exactly what my drain is. And it is bad. I mean, it got, I got tile around the outer end of the house running into that drain, and it's running back into the sewer system. And he had that done, and this gentleman back here, just like he quoted, it cost him $10,000. And now that's a heck of a car cry from 2,000. I mean, and I realize that you couldn't pay it all, but I mean, this, this to me is kind of dropping a bombshell on people that don't have the money. I'm retired, and a lot of these people out here are retired. And I just, I have a hard time finding out where I'm going to get that money from, unless you'd like to loan me something, and I'll take it. So, thank you.
Forrest Dilu, 1725 Huntington Road. I'm well aware of the problems, as much so as anyone in Waterloo. I've lived in my home about 40 years. The way this problem started, my home was built, it was built the way you're having us repair it. It was legal. I owned the house probably a year, and we had a 13-inch rain while I was gone. And I called home, and I asked my dad if he would take a trip over to my home and look. And you know, my basement was dry and nice. Why? Because we hadn't overdeveloped. And then each time in my neighborhood it rains, we have continued to develop. The city engineer gets involved. They wanted to develop at the end of Huntington Road. Myself and neighbors have fought this off many times. Bob Bamsley can tell you, I've got a speech about how high the manhole cover gets on the sanitary sewer down there by Amesboro, Amesboro and Blackhawk Garden, four foot high on a column of water. I'm not going to tell you the whole story, he gets bored. Anyway, each time you have allowed more building and more building in this area after knowing full well that it's overloaded, each time the city engineer comes out, he says, you've got a pipe this big, you can take 300 homes. You only got 150. Well, those have that water going in when it rains. He will not figure that. He will not do it. We keep building and building. You folks just allowed Tuna Speedway property to develop into a bunch of apartments. And each one of those, every time they flush or shower, it's all going down the same way, down that same little pipe that's got plenty of room, unless it rains, or two people flush at the same time. You know, when it rains, I've had Larry Smith and Tim Shea, I meet them out there. We're running around, they're putting in pumps, and I'm checking my properties in that area to see if I have to put a sump pump in. This should be funded with city money, not resident money. You're taking stormwater fee money, you're spending on other things. You should have been spending it on this type of repairs from day one, not going out and doing the other things you're doing with it. And a small amount, the financial officer has made a statement, at the end, there's a small amount, and we do that for projects. It shouldn't be a small amount, it should be the biggest amount. You know, and I looked at a house the other day that has this problem in it. If I was going to buy that house, I can tell you that my offer would have been $5,000 less than what I would normally give. Because it has this sewer problem, I don't know, 5,000 might not be enough, but the value of property, especially in these two zones, is going to drop. January 1, probably $5,000 a house. If you pass this, I suggest that you get busy the next day and say, we are going to do something about funding this with city funds.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you kindly.
I'm John Soller, 1517 Rammer Road. I used to work for WPC, Waterproof Control, now at the Sandpitt. We, I worked there for seven years. In seven years, the total time we had large amounts of water was in April and May. The rest of the year, we didn't have a problem. I bypassed on orders from my boss. We had to bypass because the integrity of the plan came first. But most time, we didn't bypass. Sometimes we'd bypass for maybe four or five hours, and sometimes we'd bypass for a week at a time. It depended on how high the river was. And then some days, we got water from- And then some days, we got water from, from the river itself through a part of the city. We had loads and loads of fish. I mean, we had a dump truck full of fish. I mean, fish is dead huge, I've never seen big dead fish. Carp, trout, bass, we had it all. The city was supposed to close those gates during a river, a high river. Never forget. Having this ordinance for all these residents, just because of two months or a month of high water bypassed conditions, it doesn't justify it. 10, 11 months out of the year, we don't bypass. I don't know what they got, the new plant down there is, is it, I was at trickling filter plant. And Evansdale had a activated sludge. I heard that the new plant is activated sludge. Is it because it's overloading, because it's not managing the water level right? 11 months out of the year does not justify this ordinance. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, council, do you have questions? Mr. Morrison.
Mr. Mayor, just two things. One, not tonight, but can somebody get me the mechanism to submit amendments to this?
Sure.
How it go about, how councilperson go about doing it?
Sure.
And the second thing is, Michelle, could you answer the question that's been posed to me? How come the stormwater fee on the water bill isn't being used for this? Or is it?
Michelle Whedon, our chief financial officer. What we're really doing with this program is we are disconnecting home footing drains from the sanitary sewer system. So, disconnecting from the sanitary sewer is an appropriate use of sewer user fees. We are projecting, in only service areas 15 and 16, to spend approximately $7 million for that. We could maybe consider using the stormwater fee, although that's really for stormwater uses, and that isn't exactly what we're doing here, in my opinion. But it would take 14 years at least to get the same amount of work done, and the EPA is not giving us 14 years. So, there are other storm sewer projects that the city's working on, that we are using the stormwater fee for, in addition to other maintenance activities that the EPA and the DNR are requiring us to do. So, it seemed to make more sense to use the sanitary sewer funds to repay the fees, the grants that the city's giving. There seems to be a lot of confusion about this. The city is being generous in comparison to many other cities in the state of Iowa in offering a grant program to reimburse homeowners up to $2,000 for this activity. So, we are, we are attempting to help, we are attempting to help individuals with the cost, and we feel it's appropriate to use the sanitary sewer funds to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
And I don't remember who, somebody, I think, at the podium mentioned that the decrease in the value, or potential decrease in the value of real estate. And I don't know if this is a question from Mr. Walsh, but have we talked through whose, whose liability it is come January 1st, 2015, and whose liability it is come January 1st, 2017, as far as notification of potential buyers, that type of thing? Has that been part of?
No, these, these are private property issues between the homeowners and their sellers and buyers. The city doesn't have to notify them what the law is, everybody's presumed to know the law. And if they want to take that into account when they're buying or selling a home, they're free to do that. Whether or not they do, we just won't know.
I guess, just my opinion, which is not worth much many times, when this program gets through, I would think the property values would go up because we're virtually going to remove the wet weather issues in the majority of these homes. So, while there is going to be a cost to do it, we're going to have a dramatic effect on wet basements in these areas.
I mean, you understand my question?
I do. And we don't have, we have not had, we have not had that conversation.
I'm in town, I don't know what is, or isn't required for that.
Yeah, we have had, we have not had that conversation.
The EPA would urge us to impose a penalty on any homeowner who did not change their system, and we're hoping they'll accept this ordinance that we proposed now. The $50 may not be enough for them. They may want us to fine them $5,000 for having a sewer system that drains into the sanitary sewer. Everybody who came up here made good comments, and I appreciate that, but we're not doing this just because we want to, we're doing this because we have to. The EPA, your federal government, is coming in and telling us, and I'm sure if you read the papers around the state, it's not just here, it's happening everywhere. One gentleman mentioned Cedar Falls, they're doing it too. So, you're not gonna avoid it by moving to Cedar Falls. It's the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, that's mandating this. We could say no all we want, and it won't do any good. They're saying do it.
We have not had the conversation.
We're saying, okay, how about $2,000 as a reasonable attempt to try to help people get this done? And the second thing to remember here, is it all the money? There's no money that the city has that's not taxpayers' money. All the money we have is taxpayer money. So, when someone says the city should pay for it, they're really saying we should give them somebody else's money. Because the ratepayers, the people who are paying rates for water and sewer in town, were the only ones who are gonna share this cost with. So, it, it's either $2,000, or if you wanna make it four, that's fine, but the fact is, it won't matter. It's all coming from ratepayers.
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing, and you know, for the third, final time. I think we all understand this is, is being forced upon us by the EPA, it's something we've gotta do. I just think we could've been more diligent, more, take our time, make sure we looked at all the options that are available. We've heard different things about, you know, putting a larger pipe, and that's more expensive, but, but nobody seems to be able to, right now, put a definitive number on that because it wasn't looked at. And I, I think it would've been fortuitous to look at what some of the other communities in other parts of the country have done to, to keep the EPA happy. And then the other thing is, again, I, I don't think we're being equitable with all the citizens, because some citizens, through no fault of their own, are gonna get stuck with a very large bill, other citizens are gonna get no bill. And it's something about that just doesn't seem equitable, and assuming this is gonna pass tonight, I, I'd like to see a committee formed to figure out if there isn't a way we can be more equitable and take care of those folks that are gonna be way beyond the $2,000, and, and I'd like to be a part of that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Anything for?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. On the state level, would assume we have, but we've researched any Clean Water Act grants or loans and all of those types of opportunities on the state and federal level.
Yes, we have, Mr. Hart. We've researched, and researched, and researched, or researched.
Yeah, I was taking a look at other states, and they've been able to tap into some of the state level opportunities with the Clean Water Act.
Further? Third reading, Madam Clerk, it's a roll call, hold please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lund?
No.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good. The motion does carry, ladies and gentlemen. The ordinance is in effect, January 1st. Item number 10, please, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Cole?
I move, we receive file, consider and pass for the third time, and adopt an ordinance providing that general property taxes levy and collected each year on all property located within the newly expanded Martin Road Development Plan area in the city of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal project. And this is an amendment of the Martin Road Development Plan, an expansion of plan area and tax increment financing district.
Second. Very good. There is a motion of second. I will make the same comments that I made regarding the foundation drains. This is the third reading of this. We've had two prior hearings. If there is someone in the audience who would like to speak to the third reading of this, we will, I will allow it to be heard. Come to the microphone, give us your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
David Dwyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I want to again speak against an expanded TIF again. Another district, when we don't have the TIF we have filled, just seems to me to be ludicrous. We keep spending money to acquire or, or develop these TIFs, and I guess with, with the other conversations about this foundation drain disconnection thing, it ties with, we're spending money to buy TIFs, but we don't have the money to help these people. And I'm not in affected area at this point. You know, we, we just keep doing these other things that, that don't help the other infrastructure of the city. We spend $1.2 million to tear down a hotel and sell the property for a dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lund?
No.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, thank you. Item number 11, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to receive file, considering pass for the second, first, first time in ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by adding subsection 154A, Dale Street and Logan Avenue, Highway 63 to section 540 obedience to official traffic control devices for full actuated push-button pedestrian signals at Logan Avenue, Highway 63 in Dale.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item 11? It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to consider and pass for the second and third time, and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Item number 12, please.
Mr. Moore.
Ms. Cole?
I move, we receive file, consider and pass for the first time, in ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by repealing subsection 153 Logan Avenue and Logan Middle School of section 540 obedience to official traffic control devices, and remove the push-button pedestrian signals on Logan Avenue at Logan Middle School.
Second. Counsel, questions or comments? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move, we suspend the rule.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I move, we consider and pass for the third time, and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Who said that?
I, it's Mr. Morrison. This is for the second and third time.
Yes.
Yes, the agenda, sorry, there's a typo.
Sorry.
Good catch.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lund?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone that would like to address the council on any matters, please do so now, just come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Randy here, 111 Highland, I'm back.
I didn't know you left, Randy.
Pardon?
I didn't know you left.
Yeah, right. It would seem that the following questions I'm gonna ask are all on the public record and should be answerable. And for those of us in Waterloo, who are interested in Waterloo Animal Control, the function with all the resources needed to do a good job, they seem to be pertinent. Some have been asked in the past, but as yet no answers have been forthcoming, or else they are answers that are really, really weak. These are not all my questions. People come to me all the time with questions about this. I try to get them to come down here. They don't wanna come down here. But quickly, and I have copies of all this for you. Are the employees using a time clock for entering and exiting work? If not, will this practices, practice be initiated and when? It is standard practice for Waterloo employees to record tasks on work order sheets. Do the animal control employees follow this practice? All the preceding are public record. Is all of it available on request? The Cedar Falls contract for animal control was live. Is the GPS record of all calls kept for audit? Is a copy of the Cedar Falls Animal Control Contract available to the public? Is a record of all requests for service to Waterloo Animal Control maintaining inclusive of, inclusive of final outcome for all animals? What is the cycle on which this report is available? In the city of Waterloo, each department has a budget. What is the budget for animal control? Not sort of, but what is it? Initially, it was $207,000. Trying to tie down that budget now seems to be increasingly difficult, but it appears that it's now around $300,000. Even so, that doesn't appear to be inclusive of all expenses. As an example, there have been no capital expenditures for the current animal control building. It has been rumored that there is some sort of general fund which can be used for animal control capital expenditures. If this is true, when, when will that money, when that money is used, doesn't those funds then appear in the Waterloo Animal Control budget? Is the former city garage on 11th and Blackhawk really going to be used for Waterloo Animal Control? After several months, the sign designating use still notes that this is the building for the city garage. Is there an existing plan for what is yet to be done to the city garage building, for it to be fully prepared for animals? Does the existing plan for abuse for Waterloo animals include the demand for vehicles and the equipment they must contain? Such equipment obviously includes capture poles, leashes, collars, cages, and medical equipment. Is the medical equipment defined, and what is the range of emergency medical work the animal control officer is trained to do? And I've got copies of this.
Randy, let's have just a little dialogue for just a minute. Go ahead and get that, you know, this is your fourth list of questions that you've, that you've submitted.
Right.
And I understand that the second one I haven't answered. And there's, there's a reason for that. What I wanna know is, is what's the real question? What do you want to know?
Just like I said here tonight.
It's not all of those things.
There is a group of people in this town who wanna have Waterloo Animal Control work well.
Okay.
We do not believe it's getting the full use of resources that it needs.
Okay.
Sandy's working her butt off to do things, and I don't think the real source, resources are, and all of our donors are citizens.
Okay, do I have an opportunity to speak? June 1st, excuse me, July 1st of last year?
Yes.
The city council voted to take over animal control. Since then, we, we have done so, and we've done a very good job of it. Couldn't we use more money?
I don't agree.
I am just not going to continue to expend staff time to answer all these questions.
And I understand that, but that's not gonna stop me from asking questions.
Can I talk, Randy, please? Could I, I'd like to talk for several minutes. Everybody's concerned about costs and how much we spend on every little thing. It's amazing how much money and time and expenditures we expend on answering these questions, time after time after time again. My suggestion is, let us run animal control. If you have open records requests, we'd be glad to give them to you if the request is submitted. If you would like this product to go back to the Humane Society, my suggestion to Councilman Lind was...
You're implying something I've never said.
Bring it up, and let's do that. But let us run animal control.
You're implying something that's my motive that I've never said.
The budget is what the budget is. The council will not allow us to go over that budget.
Let me just try to clarify one thing for you.
Spend over that.
Pat Morrison is the friend of the working guy.